Okay, great, thanks. We are here 1:01 PM, September 24th, 2024 for a special meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. We have five agenda items all to do with building renovations specifically for detention, law enforcement and courts and kind of still. So I think we can just plow right in, assume we're ready to go with all five agenda items and we're good with the agenda.
Yes.
Commissioners, excellent. Then we can hand it right off to staff. First item is discussion and consideration of Lake County courthouse renovations for detention, law enforcement and court security led by Tim Bergman and Lauren Snyder.
Sure.
And maybe I'll just like soft you for a little bit while you pull that up. And so I think there are a lot of moving pieces on what we have on the agenda today. Some of these will be decisions today because it's a special meeting, but some will be more guidance or direction to staff to tee up some future elements of the whole package in terms of what building renovation elements are approved, like some of the contracts that need to be put in place. But some of those, especially on the financing side, I think some things need a little bit more just time and prep to get in place. So some decisions, some things for discussion and staff guidance.
Yes, thank you.
And actually, I should, I mean, I don't know if fellow commissioners have anything they want to say off the top. This has been a long journey getting here. We just plow right in, plow right in.
Yeah, unless you want to give a summary of, yeah, okay.
I don't even want to start giving a summary of this multi-year effort to fix our deficient facilities.
That was part of the presentation, but you're one of them.
Then if we start twitching here, we've got to the memories.
Sure. So just starting off, touching on the commissioners priorities for their 2025 budget. There's similar themes I think everyone has seen for the past several years in the commissioners budgets and priorities they have and vision for the community. So obviously, the first one with asset management and deferred maintenance is something we've been working on for the past three years and will continue to work on for this facility, but also for all of our facilities. I'm just going to touch on the ones that this project will impact. You can argue it impacts all of them, but it's like there. Another one that evolving the community justice focus over the past several years to more of an equitable access to government services and support. This does include, you know, language justice, making Lake County government more accessible to to folks, transparency, realms of transparency, communication, you know, accessibility standards from from the state for websites. But really having a focus on that that does impact this facility, ensuring that all staff and visitors to this building can have equitable access to it and get to use it. And then last one to touch on this being operational efficiency. We've had a big lift over the past years of policy and standard operating procedure creation to make the county government, you know, more professional organization. But we've also spent a long time creating the budget process, the financial management policy, revamping our finance office to be able to take on large capital projects and things like this. So really working to ensure that the budgetary decisions that the commissioners make, you know, can be met and then of course are met within the bounds of what is feasible with Lake County government's budget and the revenues we have. So just thinking of those priorities for the commissioners today, going through this presentation. So we will talk about the background for detentions, law enforcement and court security, you know, other options and things that the county is working on, such as the jail standards commission. Then looking at the process moving forward, we will need bond counsel. We will need, we want McLaren, Wilson and Lowry are design experts for law enforcement and detentions in other public service buildings. But they do have a niche spot for law enforcement in that. And discussions of the dynamic program management, continuing services with them to serve as an owner's representative for Lake County government. And then the discussion of a certificate of participation, long-range financial plans and what the commissioners are comfortable, are having the repayment for. So this is a 25-year-long conversation. Initial conversations around this happened in 1999. So however many judges and boards and sheriffs ago, here we are. And we're going to move forward with that. The picture you see on the screen is the latest iteration of what we had worked on, designed for a new community justice center with a detention facility with 20 beds and their two courtrooms, some public meeting space, you know, larger, larger space for court staff. Those kinds of, those kinds of things. It came back with a price tag of $65.8 million, which is something that Lake County government cannot afford for any facility, but it's something that we cannot afford for that. So we've been back planning, trying to think what we can, what we can do within our budget, what we can do within statutory requirements of the county and things we have to provide such as jails. You know, so over, over the years, the community has had this discussion. So this was the latest iteration prior to that in 2016. There was a failed, was it sales tax, sales tax initiative for a new justice center that cost 17.5 million. And then prior to that, other iterations of what could be done within this facility, new facilities, all kinds of things like that. So over the past several months, what we've worked on is getting a range of magnitude of costs of like, all right, what would it look like to just build, to just build detentions somewhere? That was a very large cost. What would it look like to build other types of facilities and like renovate this facility? Those also proved to be cost prohibitive. What would it look like to acquire another public building in this community, renovate that, renovate this for public service? Those were also cost prohibitive. So where we have landed is working on what we can do within our budget and not having to increase taxes, working within the current year budget and then long-range plans on what a debt payment amount would look like. And also looking at what we can do within this existing facility. So working closely with Sheriff Speckman, we have worked on, we have a great IGA now with Chaffey County and with Sheriff Speezy down there to hold our folks and then do transport for them back and forth. So we're much closer than than we've ever been in terms of transport. Also working with Sheriff Speckman, realizing the budgetary constraints for the rest of county government, realizing that if we could do holding cells at this facility, continue to retrofit space that we have here, which we have done in the past. We've retrofitted two cells there into holding cells. So if we could retrofit holding cells into that, what would that look like? So that brings us to today where I'll turn it over to the commissioners if you guys have any thoughts on these. But so, you know, there's more than just not, or trying to figure out a capital campaign, right? There are statutory requirements for a jail in each county. So we have been working closely with the jail standards commission, the board, Sheriff Speckman and Lauren, my deputy, on what else it could look like to change statutory requirements for things like Lake County where we cannot support construction, maintenance, operation and staffing of a jail. With that, with, because all of that impacts our ability to fund other state mandated programs. So that's another prong in this approach that we are working on to have some statutory breathing room and then also working on ways where intergovernmental agreements between local elected officials can become a little bit easier, working with the jail standards commission on things like perhaps it's not an individual county's liability insurance for inmates. Perhaps there's, we can access the state funded pool or state pool for liability insurance for things like that. Lauren, if you want to touch more on that, if I covered.
I got it.
Okay, all right. So from there, that was a quick recap of 25 years. But if you all want to add anything for this before we dive into a little more on where we're at.
I guess add maybe like one or few sentences. I think, I mean, part of why that building that you showed on the previous slide was so expensive is because we were, I think, we were trying to fulfill the statutory mandate, you know, both on the court side, but also specifically on the detention side. And, you know, that had, that had a, you know, a head count, you know, cell count, whatever word you want to use, you know, somewhere in the twenties, you know? And that, that just physical square footage drives the cost as well as, you know, a lot of other associated functions you have to have to meet jail standards. You know, when you hold people for much longer than 48 or 72 hours, you start needing a lot more food and laundry and exercise room. You know, it's like, it just becomes a much, much bigger facility, which really is why in a very large part of that, you know, 60-some million dollar cost. And I think why, you know, part of why we've been on this journey to ending up with the holding cell approach. But I think, you know, I just want to be really clear that, you know, part of why it's what we're beginning to consider with the rest of this meeting is, is cheaper as it is, it is less, you know? I just, I want to say that really bluntly. And, you know, I think it's important that we have this slide to understand that we, we still, we're working really hard to get the clear statutory authority, you know, to, to, to do, to do this because it's not crystal clear. Or it is crystal clear that this is, you know, that this is a new approach for these smaller counties that we're kind of, they're the poster child for. So again, I think that that's just important. We didn't magically make the cost lower. We are de-scoping the project. Thanks, yeah.
To that point, I would also just love to acknowledge the sequential intercept mapping and all those pieces that we're trying to include in that larger project to enhance further community benefits, enhance efficiencies with 911 and dispatch and having meeting rooms for those in the system. That would be really easy to go from one, you know, one, one meeting to another and or one program to another. And I think that that can't get lost in, this is, this is our physical solution for that physical deficiency. But with the lower costs, you know, we still intend to improve some of those other programs that we could offer or we do offer or we could offer to enhance services to those within the system. And then last but not least as well, you know, with the growing liabilities across the nation, let alone the state. And I know those of you who are intimately involved and work in those physical spaces are well aware. But, you know, this is also a big, checks a box for us reducing our risks in certain aspects that protects us to the best of our ability from having costs that that will surely impair our ability to provide other database services outside detentions and courts. So.
Yeah, thank you.
And then with that review there, you know, this is not, you know, discounting or changing any of the partnerships that Lake County government has had previously or any of the conversations, collaborations with all of our partners in this building, what to do, what everybody wants, what everybody needs and trying to make things happen. That can ensure that Lake County is not beholden to just to one project and that there is some flexibility for other, other things that the county is required to do. So with that, we'll actually move to the second agenda item commissioners question. Just out there, but would Chris lead on that?
I'll pick up there. Y'all may recall, and I looked at it, in September 2022, we engaged Tuck Rock to be bound bond counsel on this initiative to help the county navigate the very complex web requirements for the certificate of participation. In reviewing their engagement letter, it didn't have an expiration date. So technically, I haven't received any notice of their termination of that engagement. But I do believe we need to revisit it with them because two years passing, the legal fees that they had projected for this were in the neighborhood of $82,500. And I expect that might have changed during the last two years unless we can convince them they should hold that, that level, which I will attempt to do. But it would still be my recommendation to engage them. They are, there was a list or string about bond counsel recommended and used by the counties. And they are the number one group and use for this purpose. So it'd be my recommendation to re-engage with them. And if we need to do an updated engagement letter, I'll bring that back to you.
Do you want us to make a motion and vote on that guidance or can we just?
You can do it at the end if you want to, as we go through the rest of the elements, unless you're prepared to go on and say, yes, this is what you want to do, so.
Let's, let's go through and hear all the substance, then we can come back and, yeah.
So we have had, you know, yes, there have been a lot of different vendors who have proposed different facilities for Lake County and also working with, you know, other vendors who have done the retrofitting of holding cells here. So where we've landed now with the help of Colleen Caneda from Dynamic Program Management is, I would, I would like to, I'll turn it over to Jim in a moment, but I would like to for the board to understand what, what Jim's and his firm's scope would be and how that will actually help us contain costs and also meet like the board's priorities and get exactly with what we want. So with that, Jim, I'll turn, I'll turn it over to Jim McLaren, who's principal at his firm.
Hello there. Hopefully you can hear me okay. This is coming through. Oh, yay. Okay. I'm in a very rural part of North Carolina today. So I wasn't sure if it was going to be coming through or not. The way we, we tend to work is a little bit different than most firms. We are a firm that does nothing but specialize in architecture for public safety, justice and the forensic sciences. And we've had quite a bit of experience working throughout Colorado. But we typically are not the prime architect when it comes to the design phases eventually. So our scope of work typically starts with working with the user groups to define the needs of the project and consider various options. Do a program and a floor plan development package. And then at that point, we recommend typically that we work in concert with potentially a local firm. And what this does is it allows you to have a firm that's close by, very responsive, and they will be in a position to prepare the working bid documents and be available during construction. But we would be working with them as a support entity consulting architect throughout the whole process once we bring them on. So what that does is that A, it allows you to throw your net wider. A lot of times firms won't submit to do the design process because they haven't worked on custody facilities or similar higher, higher security technical facilities. And what that does is, at least we found in particularly in Colorado, is that puts you in a position where you're selecting from the same five firms that always submit. When we are there as the owner's technical architect to start the process, it allows you to, once the design has been set after we've done that, bring in or cast your net, if you will, to a very wide spectrum of architects that may not have had that much experience in that building type because we're going to be there to help them every step of the way. So what it does essentially is it puts us up front to help define the project, lay it out, prepare a floor plan that is bought into, work with your program management firm to develop a cost using, hopefully a contractor to price it out and then tweak it to make sure that we're on budget, if you will. And then move forward with adding in the local team that we would then support. So how this benefits you is A, you have a wider variety of potential options for design phases because our comfort level is, is high because they know they'll have support in the technical areas when they need it. And it also allows us to quickly get through and define the project typically for a lot less than what the, the normal fee a full-service design firm would charge. Usually for a project like this, you know, they'll, they'll bid, build a, bid the whole project on a percentage of construction basis you set your project budget and they would, would bid that. We, the first phase typically of schematic design is somewhere between 15 and 18% of the total architectural fee. So when we're turning it over, that's already done. And we can usually deliver that part much more cost effectively than someone that's coming up the learning curve on these building types. So we have done similar scopes of work with clients recently in Montrose, Parker. We're doing it right now with Chaffey County. And so far, I think, you know, any of those references would give you a pretty positive feedback on doing it that way rather than trying to bring in a firm that is more focused on the overall size of the thing and that where how that associates with a total percentage fee. So I hope that makes sense, but that's, that's the way we typically work. So we would be essentially contracted either through Dynamic or directly to the county. So during the whole process, we would be available to you on an arms-length basis to test ideas or if the questions come up during the process that you want to unbiased evaluation of during, if there were any change orders or something like that, we would be there to be available to you to help you with no, you know, dog in the fight one way or the other.
I had a question just on the, on the process then. So at some, at, at the right point along the detail of design, as you were, as you were laying it out with our, with our owner's rep and maybe with your input, we would then contract with that sort of consulting or prime architecture firm to, to bring the design fully to, you know, that point of construction documents, et cetera.
Right. With, for instance, with Montrose, what we did was we did the program for the facility, did a very detailed dimensioned floor plan of how it would work and then helped them write the RFP actually for the design team who then submitted. We participated in that selection process although we don't vote. And then, then we worked with the firm that was selected from that point forward to completion of the project.
Okay, great, thanks, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I think we're, I'm not seeing any other questions from the, from the commissioners. I think that was a great overview. Thanks.
All right, appreciate it.
I think the nice thing in discussing with, with Jim is that basically everything he just said, but really being able to help, help us and the owner's rep better manage the architectural and design team because we have had some scope creep in the past or suggestions right from, from past design teams that were not helpful or beneficial to the cost of the project or really what the goal was for the board to achieve, to achieve getting it done.
Well then, for agenda items, for, for this agenda item and then also, I mean, sort of needs to match with agenda item four on the DPM scope. Do we want to talk in more detail about the scope or do you have some slides on that?
I do not have slides for the DPM scope, but Colleen and Katie are on. We have used DPM as owner's rep to complete the Southern Fire Station. And then they've been the owner's rep for other local government entities here, but then also helped us with the Justice Center project. But they've been an asset to me and to this project. But I would, I would recommend amending either their, their contract to expand the scope for this specifically and then potentially to, to take on McLaren, Wilson and Lowry. But I can also, Colleen's on if you want to, if you have other questions to ask.
Well, maybe say more. I mean, I think as we've discussed, you know, in, in work sessions getting to this point, I think we, we for sure, and as you laid out in the drawing, we absolutely for sure like the scope would include the detention, you know, remodel, renovation to get to the holding cell count. But then I think where I'm a little hazier about where our scope boundaries are, I mean, I think the law enforcement sort of office space, you know, would, would almost certainly need to be included in that scope because it, you know, it's like the booking area, the, the Sally Court, the secure handling of prisoners, you know, detention officers, you know, workspace. So I think, you know, to me, like clearly detention, clearly the law enforcement working area and some of the entrance into the, you know, improved security. But then I think where we need to get a little, at some point, we need to get a little more precise or have some add alternates or whatever the right word is, is, you know, there's going to then need to be a real clear vision of like what detainee secure movement within the building to the courts is, you know? So, and that's where I sort of, you know, like any renovation you start, like where do you, where you draw the line into court security and renovations of the court floor at the current building. So I think we just need to get some language that we agree on in the final contract there. Speaking of something else, oh yeah, and then I think, you know, again, it has come up in some of our workshops getting to this point is like, you know, as you start getting into major parts of the building, I, I am curious at what point sort of systemic issues of the building come up. Like, oh, if you're doing a third of the building, like at what point is there electrical upgrades or HVAC upgrades or windows or modern heating controls or any heating controls? No, but I mean, like, but like, you know, at some point, like, you know, you don't remodel the inside of your house without fixing your roof, right? Like, you know, so I think we just, that, that, those are the things on my mind when I see, you know, scope of work with McLaren, Wilson and Lowry and with DPM, so.
Okay.
And then I think we're like very close on the same page there, but just need to get some precise wording.
Okay. I think that is, that is good feedback and that is something I have discussed with Jim and Colleen about this, right? Like we, we know, we know how it happened with the, with the two holding cells that we have now, right? Like what that scope of work looked like, how like those changes, all of that. But we also know in the community planning and development offices below there that there's still some kind of mysterious leak from the jail that needs to be remedied, right? So there, there are those underlying systemic issues that, that are there.
Yeah. And I think just for, you know, from my, as one commissioner, I like, I want to strike that perfect balance between preventing mission creep and not being, you know, short sighted in the scope so that we miss the right opportunity to address some systemic issues that really should be addressed.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. And I would, I would, the windows and the air handling are things that I would assume would fold into this project because I don't know how you efficiently run a third or more of the building without that. So yeah, I would be open, open to adding that without considering that so far breach from the scope of work. I also just don't want to forget, and I don't know what the conversation has been with E911, but I imagine that dispatch will have to find a different location or some more ideal location or remain in that location with some other design elements changing around it if it is maintained in the same space. if it is maintained in the same space. Yeah, and I I don't know, have there been other conversations out that you know, on board on location?
I don't know about the board, but yeah. Known to the board on location, but has been brought up to all of the ring and where equipment that may have to be evaluated, how that's situated in their views on a shared wall with detention. So I imagine dispatch is gonna be touched one way or another. Video informing this plan.
Yeah. I think so. I mean, I think it would be ideal to not be necessarily intermixed with detentions somehow. So if there can be some separated office space.
Part safety concerns.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, sure, sure. I mean, in the courts, we've mentioned getting safety improvements, you know, we don't have many luxuries in spending, but we certainly wanna incorporate safety improvements upstairs for you all, all throughout the building. But I think the one domino falls right on what can we fit for detentions and then maybe some of those other design elements
Yeah.
come after, once that's decided on.
Yep, and I mean, I keep elaborating going around holes, but like one thing we talked about is like if if it ends up being like detention entrance works better on a ground floor level of the parking lot, but then that creates a problem for like transport across the building up onto the third sort of the courts. So that's why I just think, you know, we need to keep pulling at the strands of this without, you know, doing everything at once.
Yes, and that was, um, you know, just, you know, we've, Jim, Colleen and I have had lots of discussions about this building and shortfalls, pitfalls, all of that. And then we're just like exploring the costs of the new builds were cost prohibitive. So then, yes, it is, then what are the what are the puzzle pieces or Tetris here that we can do to make this building safer and meet our statutory requirements?
Okay.
I think, you know, from this, I think then I can work with Colleen and Jim on that, like really getting the board's feedback into that scope of work. So that it is something that we feel more comfortable with before formal approval or change of a contract.
Do we need to talk more about, is there anything specific to the DPM contract? I mean, I imagine like the scope will pretty much just mirror from the sort of McLaren Wilson and Lowery and the DPM.
I think it'll have that incorporated in there and then
I know it's a different roles, but
Yes, yeah.
the scope of the project will
Yeah.
will match. Okay.
Thank you. One really fun one. So what we have done is we have worked with FCI Constructors and DPM on renovating the existing law enforcement and detention area. You know, based on the models that they have, also their past experience, we're doing the retrofit of the two holding cells that we have now. So we do have these estimated total project costs. And we've been working with the assumption that it'll be the highest one at twelve point eight million. So from there is where, I think, and I know Alan's on, so so where we can talk about the certificate of participation. Alan pulled these numbers, I think, last week for us. It is nice that, you know, rates are going down more and more, but here you see, yeah, different borrowing rates and then the interest rates. And Alan, I know you do this a lot, but do you give an overview of a COP again for us?
Sure, yeah, me and everybody, Alan Matlos with Steeple. I'll mention that not consistently, but I am one of those people that's been around for twenty five years talking about this, so. Little grayer, little grayer than I used to be. So certificate of participation is a lease financing. It is very common among local governments in Colorado and throughout the country. So for this project, we would it would more resemble like a home equity loan. We would, you know, use the existing courthouse as the leased property or portion of the courthouse as the leased property and you kind of borrow against the value and then you make improvements into the property. The security for the certificates is just whatever legally available money the county has. The payments are subject to annual appropriation. That's why there's not an election required. Term can be one of the terms shown here or some other term to be pronounced. And I'm hopeful, I think I'm, I could say that the interest rates shown here are a little conservative. I think the rates would be a little bit lower than that, but I don't I don't wanna over commit. The the process is is relatively straightforward in terms of documentation. Most of the work is done by Cutac Rock, the bond counsel that you talked about earlier, and with help from the county to assemble a lot of information. At once those documents are prepared at a future date, the county commissioners will consider a resolution approving the certificates, which says we will borrow, we plan to borrow X dollars for a term not to exceed, kind of thing, and a interest rate not to exceed. At that point in time, you're still not obligated to borrow the money, you're just allowing the county to borrow money. Once all the documents are put together and once the county decides to move forward, then as as the underwriter, sell certificates to investors. At that time, that's the point in which the county's permitted. So we have a certificate purchase agreement, which is an agreement between Lake County and Steeple that said, these are the rates, these are the terms of the financing. So there's plenty of time to decide the amount, the scope, the project, all that kind of stuff. You don't have to decide that now, because it'll take, you know, at the fastest ninety days and what timeframe is to get this done. So you have time to figure that out. So it looks like a mortgage, it's it's not, because it's annually appropriated, but that's kind of the the structure. And these payments show that obviously the the shorter the borrowing period, the higher the annual cost. But of course, then the longer you borrow, the lower the annual cost, but then it's more over time. Like think about your home mortgage, the same thing. So my recommendation is usually you find a payment that you're comfortable with and maybe go a little bit longer just to give you some flexibility. These can be paid off early if you have extra money or if you wanna refinance. That's something to think about as well. I'll I'll just stop there and see if there are questions or doubts.
I think we're good, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Alan. So thinking through our long-range financial plans and considerations, so things that we have talked about and we know that will be available to Lake County government. So we get two and a half million dollar general fund contribution to this project plus the three and a half million dollars that we have from the congressional director's spending and talks with the USDA. You know, the change from a new justice center to focusing on this on this site is not an issue for the USDA. So that can go forward with, you know, there are DOLA grants for the EIF, yeah, AF funds that can go up to a million dollars. There's also some planning support and planning grants that could go in. In the past, we have been awarded up to, or two million dollars from underfunded courts. I don't know that they would be so generous in the future, but, you know, we still need to plan, engage with the judicial district more. Get that all done before we can apply for for underfunded.
Well, I mean, just to be clear, underfunded by statute can't fund a detention facility, so
Right.
there may be some things in in our discussions that underfunded can't fund firms a detention facility.
Right, yes. But for any for upgrades that are done upstairs or things that do impact the court or address court needs, we can explore underfunded courts funding. So considering, my recommendation would be for the board to consider either the borrowing amount of ten or twelve million dollars. So three and a half plus the two and a half is six million dollars, so looking at project cost for sixteen or eighteen million. But from there, I think we need to have that the discussion of where the board is more comfortable. If these are my recommendations of what we can do within our existing budget. You know, going above the twelve million dollars, there's gonna need to be some more cuts to general government operating budgets. And they won't be painful, but there will need to be some cuts in there to be able to to make that with our existing budget.
Oh, I think if we're looking at a, sorry, the twelve point eight million, was that the most?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like even the ten million gives us a pretty good buffer. Although I'm not sure, I mean, wanting to do things to the rest of this building, not not to any, um, sorry, not outside of just creating efficiencies, right, the windows or that heat exchange. I mean, my best guess would be that it wouldn't push us into sixteen million, but that might just be a hope.
Well, and I I mean, I agree with that and also is in some of these things that we were talking about as sort of potential additions to the scope or things to consider budget dependent. I mean, some of those might have other grant opportunities, you know, like building envelope, you know, energy efficiency improvements, HVAC stuff, a lot of that. In the last two years, there's a ton more grants out there for that. So there may be some things that we can include that are funded or at least partially funded. You know, so it'll be the it'll be the local match, you know, so.
Alan, you said to, you know, come up with a comfortable number and then add some to it. Is that not necessarily addressing the scope of the project at hand? But in your experience, have there been other things that come up for jurisdictions? And in getting a getting a additional one or two million, is not that that is not a guarantee and that's a hard process if you have a ten million dollar COP?
Yeah, it's, I I don't want, I would never want the county to borrow more money than it needs. But it is immensely more difficult to borrow ten million and then come back six months later and borrow another million. It's just, it's just painful. So what I usually recommend is you try to find that comfortable number. And also in terms of the repayment term, think about that as well, because obviously that's a long-term budget. Give yourself a little bit of grace in terms of this. I am the least expert at building anything of anybody on this call, I'm sure. But I know in my experience, when you start digging around in an older building, you find stuff that you didn't know about. So a lot of times that's what happens, you know, and then all of a sudden there's something else. Or alternatively, there's some opportunity to do something which is cost effective. So those are things to think about, but obviously you don't, you don't want anyone to over commit.
And actually, that was, sorry, I've probably been told this like several times now at this point, but in the in that, you know, ten point six to twelve point eight range on that on the holding cell slide, there's a very healthy or, I mean, appropriate cost escalation number in there. Does that include contingency, like is this is this the, and so sort of the point that was just made, you know, usually carry like a pretty healthy contingency on building renovation costs. I'm just wondering, I I feel like, I feel like the answer was yes, that estimated construction cost had, you know, that had designed, I mean, that's like the all-in, not just the hard construction cost, right?
I believe so. So I think you probably double confirm that.
Yes, that's correct. There's contingency in that number.
Yeah, okay, okay, so.
And and escalation, so it has contingency and escalation.
Yeah, we have, I mean, there's the twenty two percent escalation cost, which, yeah, we have learned is needed. I mean, I just raised that just so, you know, we don't need to add in like, I mean, we already have some contingency in that raw number. We don't need to like double dip on contingency necessarily.
I mean, I think there's comfort at the ten million level, but it seems that we should go for a twelve million COP to capture everything. If that's what I'm understanding, all I was at, I mean, and then we don't have to
You get a lump sum, I believe, it's it is a lump sum, so you have to take the full amount that you ask for and you pay the interest on that for a while. It's not a line of credit where you can draw what you need as you go along.
Right, right.
Jeff, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I, I'm not gonna give big long speeches, this is a quite, gladly ask questions. There's no contingency for how we're gonna secure this building. The secure, not detention, but the security is gonna cause more than new machines up there. There's gonna have to be structural changes to secure this building to standards in twenty twenty four moving forward. And we've, the courts have certainly become an aside in this whole discussion. I hope we can have that dialogue as well, but when we started this discussion, because we we didn't have a secure facility for many other reasons. We didn't have the ability to meet the needs of this community, courts-based wise, attorney meeting-based wise. But at the at the heart, this has to be a secure building, it's not. Even at the heart, that has to be part of this group discussion. We're not getting another courtroom, we're not getting more space. We at least have to have a secure building. We don't have that. Before you make final number decisions, I think we have to have that discussion. Just so you don't think I'm coming in here with that solution, we can come up with numbers and solutions. I we learned as of the end of August, it's, we were sort of at in the discussion, at least that's how I interpret it. Whereas of earlier August, my discussions were, we're looking at the school. And Mike was here, yeah, maybe August, I don't know the exact date, that's the first time sort of I learned that I support the detention partner, that there was really nothing going to the courts. I I can tell you when I'm bad, it's a problem, but security is critical for this, or people aren't gonna go to court without security. So before you finalize numbers, I would ask them to think about that.
Couldn't start, I mean, I first of all, I think I would say we haven't forgotten that. Like, that's why we've been working on this for two, three years, you know, so we really honestly have not forgotten that. We just, I I think, have made this or will make, but, you know, have been heading towards the discussion that detention has to come first. And you you we we just can only do so much at once. And we know that the broader court security thing is there. And I think that's why, you know, we had that discussion a little bit earlier about, you know, where is the boundary of the scope? Like, you know, we don't wanna go into full mission creep where we end up with like forty million and we have to like pull the plug again. You know, like really don't want that. But at the same time, we don't wanna be ignorant of the fact that, you know, even just the just the base level, that like what we were talking about before, that transported detainees within the building securely begins to interface with what the court floor looks like. So there's a, there's no clear line where something's getting like left on the cutting room floor. So again, I think we are super mindful of that. I even just went back and reread the like twenty nineteen deficiency report again, good old friend. You know, so we're painfully aware of that. I think we just, we need to start with what can fit in here, and if the scope and pricing allows, we can address some of the more systemic stuff in the building. So I'll I'll stop there and see if I missed something.
I guess from my perspective, it it can't be an either or. Yeah, I'm not angry, I'm not, we we're all in this together, frustrated, we're all frustrated, maybe me more than others, us more than others, but I don't think it could be an either or. And I got a judge who sits out here who's not behind security. He's behind security where they're, but he's not in a secure area. And that's just, it doesn't occur in twenty twenty four, that's maybe the only courthouse in the state that hasn't. We've got systemic problems. I I don't want to hijack your meeting, but.
Part of the meeting.
It's more than just, there's gonna have to be major, from our perspective, major renovations to make this a secure building. If they're not twenty million dollar renovations, we come with money. So I I think that should be part of this discussion. I'm gonna tell you, just so you hear it, our ability to serve the community is drastically impacted moving forward toward courtroom. That's not what today's function is, but I think you need to hear that. County court numbers are up fifty percent, or staff, law enforcement. I I can only run one court at a time, so justice will be delayed. I just want everybody to know that. We can only provide services we have court. That's not what today's about, but I think it's important for the community to know that.
Yeah. And, you know, I'll just say, I think we've been in meetings, I've used that exact phrase, you know, justice delayed, is justice denied, like, it's not acceptable. But, I mean, we can only do what we can afford, and I I hear you.
I I accept that, too. I'm not, I'm not here jumping up and down saying, find me a second courthouse. I I want you to know that there's an impact on our ability to provide to the community. I'm not using that as leverage, saying, get me another courthouse, we can't afford that right now. I accept that, we accept that, I don't make you talk in the eye. But I I can't accept a courthouse that's not secure, not just, not for my staff, for everybody, the community as well.
Yeah.
Um, and just to echo on Chief Joe Duncan's comments, what was just striking me about that was just when we were talking about the ten and twelve million. And the ten million is largely to retrofit, fix, whatever we're gonna do with the jail. Obviously, I agree that needs to be done, but where we're starting to start to have the conversation about, it sounds to me what you're saying is, why would we go to twelve if we can do this for ten? The ten doesn't, if if we haven't even, those numbers don't even seem to contemplate anything for the courthouse itself. So my feelings are, why would we say then let's go with the ten when we know it's gonna be tremendous difficulty to add anything to that? What I'm hearing now, we're, it sounds like we're back at the early phases of architecture to contract with our architect, who's gonna subcontract to local architects, who have no idea what the numbers are. I don't know why we'd hamstring ourselves, saying, we know the jail's gonna cost ten million, why we would say, let's only get ten million? Because the issue's not that way. It's it's an ongoing issue. But that's giving us no, no space to do anything on the court side. And again, I totally get we're not, there's not gonna be new justice center, that's, that ships out a long time ago, and I'm I'm not even talking about that, but I don't I don't know why we would, we would limit with, if Tim's saying our budget, we can do twelve without adversely affecting other community services, why we wouldn't at least budget for that, knowing that there presumably is gonna be some architectural presentation on upgrades in some capacity to the security of the courts.
Yeah, I think we need to get an accurate estimate of what the, not just the jail, but the security upgrades in the courthouse before we decide on a on a number or a COP. She she put the cart to the horse.
I mean, I do, I don't disagree with that, but I also think that we could go for the twelve million, we have some more, we can, we have leverage in the mills that we levy with the county, and so I think we need to be talking about increasing those to make at least half of our payment at a ten or twelve million dollar borrowing level. And I don't, I wouldn't, similar to the air handling or the windows, I wouldn't imagine doing any of this without incorporating some safety issues or an additional stairwell or an elevator or something for the safety of the courts, but I I just, I think for me at least, that's like a much fuzzier number from that, what is it, seven point eight million of like a, the last court?
Seven point three.
Seven point three million, that was like a court how courtroom renovation, and I think there were some things in there that in my mind, we can eliminate or we've discussed reducing to, um, really looking at like safety improvements, um, knowing that we can't, we don't have the luxury to add a lot of nice to haves, um, and if that means us, you know, to, I mean, I just don't think we've had, we can't get there, we we can only speculate, right, without getting those actual design numbers.
The seven point three million was the full renovation of the eleven thousand five five hundred square feet upstairs.
Okay.
At the top floor.
Tim, do we have any general funds that we could contribute to this, beyond what's estimated?
You could.
We're also considering using general fund to purchase land for the school district that's in the town.
Right, we have some of those other priorities, the district lands, other, the Harrison project, the housing projects.
Coroner Building.
I think, I just do the twelve million and that debt payment year over year, and that we're gonna have to make cuts to be able to sustain that. Like, we need also think about, well, do you want to contribute towards housing and economic development, and do those stall also? So it's a bigger discussion while around what other things does the community need for you to invest in.
So I I hate being that guy at the meeting who just complains and never offers any solutions. And so I'm not gonna do that, I mean, we we bring, we bring the judicial branch with us, we have the ability to not ask you, can you get us some security drawings? We have the ability to bring security drawings. Some price estimates, I mean, they're gonna be broad price estimates, but at least ballpark estimates, I think, but, you know, we've got an architectural staff who understands security requirements of the court, so we can bring some solutions to the table, some options to the table. And we also bring, we bring money to the table, so how much, I don't know. We've gone to underfunded a few times, they've expressed to me every time I see them, we still believe in Lake County. So I want to bring options to you, I don't want to be the guy here just saying, do better for us. I just asked for the opportunity to do it. It's all, this is all very new for me. Three weeks ago, I, we were, the school option wasn't played, that, I, first I heard about the school option was early August, so I apologize, I don't have those numbers for you, but I know, we we have the ability, we got the staff to to help you.
Okay.
I'm just to add to the chief's comment there, I think, you know, what we're seeing here, the concern that we're raising is, you know, this is obviously gonna be a large debt payment that the county takes on into, you know, years and years, decades to come, so really there isn't gonna be another opportunity likely to come back and do it. So if we don't incorporate something as important as security now, we just wonder, you know, is that gonna just push us to thirty years down the line of having to deal with it? So advocating for what's most important is obviously gonna be the security component. There's other deficiencies that we can talk about, but really we're trying to bring to the top the most important so that we don't, you know, spend money on or use the dollars in in less efficient ways. And if you're willing to do the project to the court's floor, underfunded is absolutely supporting it. They've been trying to, I think they offered some funding to do a little bit of feasibility for that in this current grant, so you know, we're we're with you, we understand that it's not always a linear process, but, you know, we're we're not gonna abandon that, and ultimately, we just want to make sure that at the end of the day, the community and the district staff have a safe place to work.
This is Elizabeth Roman Housen, by the way, who is, she's not our only resource, but she's an architect, I'm training her, so we always.
I mean, I would imagine we getting some proposal of those security improvements would be a part of McLaren's work.
And that's.
Cause we're not, I mean, we're not gonna do big structural changes and not incorporate some additional.
Because McLaren could engage with the courts, architects, just as they're engaging with the other teams, to see what information the courts.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, earlier in this session, we flagged that, you know, when we come back and actually, you know, make some motions or give guidance, I mean, we're gonna have, I mean, there's the core scope, but then, you know, we're gonna have a clear discussion of how far the scope guidance goes, and I think that, you know, that's where we'll get in to this. I mean, again, that seven million and change number is an estimate and everything can be worked with, but, you know, going from borrowing ten million for a total budget, sixteen, you know, adding seven is a lot. I I.
Yeah, I don't think it's not seven.
Yeah, yeah. No, but it but it's a tricky thing to know, to the point of like, you know, we don't want to overborrow, but we, it's extremely hard to go back and borrow more. So you know, if going from ten to twelve, you know, may maybe that means that when we get some sort of add alternates that do more and more on the security and the third, you know, top floor renovation, we have more, more room for that. And yeah, again, we talked about there's some underfunded courts, there's grants out there. Unfortunately, like, a lot of those come after you've already committed to the project. So I just, in my, I know in my own decision making over the last several years, that has been, you know, money that not come after the fact is, you know, factors in differently than money that you secure upfront was on there.
There there is, however, a track record of those funds being allocated
For sure.
by the state for that purpose.
Yeah, yeah.
And that if there is no courthouse component to this project, those aren't gonna be funds that are gonna be valid.
Totally understood, yeah.
One question that I can't remember the answer to, Mike asked Alan, is prepayment?
Well, yeah, there's no cost for prepayment, so we could borrow twelve, have a project of ten and pay back the two.
Two million, and then that's what I was thinking, and that would help alleviate some of the interest costs, at least.
Yeah. And and there's also a trade off, I mean, when in, I mean, if you borrow less and have a smaller annual debt payment, then we will have a healthier general fund, you know, at least with the like decade long timeframe.
I would just note, though.
Yeah.
I think we all know the sense of the community as a whole at this point is they don't envision the need for, why do we need courtroom security? Why do we need, and I see what's on social media as well, why do we spend any money on the criminals? That's that's the tenor of a lot of this, and that's why you all are gonna be in the position of leadership to make these tough decisions, is when you're saying we'll have a general fund and that maybe, you're not gonna get the support of the community globally, continually dipping back into that.
Tim, I would have heard some underfunded deadline is coming up, a lot of emails now. I would encourage getting something in, even if it's a placeholder and we can firm it up and maybe edit it, and trust me to do a little dialogue with that group and say, timing was bad, wanted to get something in there to you, potentially have have a need. So I would encourage, I think it's a, it's right there.
Yeah, I think it's six days away.
Yeah. But but if we get something in, we at least got a placeholder in and we can work off of that.
It would just need to be finalized by the November meeting.
And I don't know, what's, what is our timeline for McLaren engaging in getting any design or firmer numbers?
As soon as possible up to this with lending, I think this will work with DPM.
I don't know, but that has to be committed in order to submit, I think you guys would just have to commit to doing it. We don't need any, you know, invoices or proposals, you just need to say what the plan is and be able to clarify that and, you know, that you can move forward with it.
And then if something happens, we don't get the money, it's turned back, so I mean, I, it's worth the risk, it's worth the time for my person, it's not like time, it's worth throwing it out there so you have, keep the possibility open you have to. I don't know what it is, but we've, underfunded's been been generous to the challenge, rightfully so, it's what they, it's it's there for.
Um, what's the level now that you're allowed to ask for?
I think we have up to three million, and that's split over all the requests, so you can ask for up to that, you know, obviously I doubt we would do one award for the whole amount, but there's no limit beyond what we have available.
Mm hmm. Okay.
But, I mean, to begin, but I mean, it was a two million ask for, I forget what we decided was the sort of court's allocation of the sixty some million, but I think it was twenty million ish, so. Um, yeah, ten percent of the
That's all.
court's portion.
Okay.
I mean.
In one request, you can come back for more, that was, that was in one award, you've definitely awarded you guys more than that, that was just the biggest award that we'd given you guys.
Yeah. Building construction base.
Can I ask one question, is it appropriate, just about the design team?
Sure.
One with that, you know, obviously we've gone through a whole lot of design phases, and I appreciate the experts that you have here, but is more than a justice project, this is really a renovation project, so has there been a lot of vetting regarding, looking on, I know some of these other court projects, but there's been a lot of new construction, like in route and things like that, that have been completely new built, so there's gonna be a lot of complexities to this project beyond just the security and, you know, justice component of that. We've gone through all these feasibility studies outlining all of the issues in the buildings, so I'm just wondering, is is that the best route to go again with two architects to resolve that?
Yes, they have all of the information that has been done by GST, RHA, Anderson Hollis, all of that on past things, it's also become evident that we need an architect to manage an architect, an architect that is responsive to the commissioner's desires for this project and for getting it done. So they have done renovations in the past. We also have done the retrofitting of the holding cells here currently with the owner's rep and with FCI contractors and things like that, so there is experience with working with Lake County, improving the experience, so I would, I would say yes.
Okay.
And and I think along the way with, like, all those different plans, I mean, we've tried, I mean, you've been involved in quite a few of these, but you know, we've tried basing chunks of the Monroe Street project, we've tried looking at, oh, can we build a little bit of extra?
Yeah.
You know, buy that building or add on to the front, like, and, I mean, the larger new construction, it's just too, it, there's almost nothing except like a tiny little office building that comes in for lower than these numbers, they're just, the chunks are just too big for us.
And we're not asking for that at all, obviously, like the chief said, we were just looking at the school before, so now kind of coming back to this, we're just trying to catch up with where all that's at, so thank you for that information.
Yeah. So Tim, for the for the decision and guidance, so it's guidance on drafting a resolution, so we will need here to, I mean, we won't actually like to lock it in until we vote on the resolution uh, for the COP, but we need to give guidance on a clear borrowing number.
Yep.
So I can, I can start, or you?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm, I I, well, I think you you were kind of heading, it sounded like you were heading this way, Sarah, I mean, I'm, I lean towards the twelve million borrowing for eighteen million total, I just feel like in a renovation project with some of the scope conditions we've been talking about and we'll come back to, I think we want that extra headroom. But, you know, as we've looked at in previous work sessions going higher than that annual debt payment just starts to, it just starts to cut into too much other stuff in the overall budget and long range projections. So that's how we're, I'm leaning.
Yeah, I I agree, and I think that, you know, we at least have to show that to the underfunded courts or other funding opportunities that we have that we're prepared to invest and and put that uh, financial support behind the project. I think we have to increase our mills, we can't do that, and probably that would be a question, that has been a question in the past, or. I think we have to increase our mills. We can't do that, and probably that would be a question, that has been a question in the past, or you know, are we actually exhausting all of our financial revenue opportunities and?
We'll reverse our temporary reduction, not increase them.
Yeah, correct. But we'll not, yeah, still, thank you. We will take back the credit. Um, and I, I think that would make me feel better with a formula to meet that, um, debt payment for twelve million, um, and then I mean, I think, I see both of those things, the COP process and the design process moving in parallel with each other, and if the project comes out including all of the parts and pieces under the twelve million, then we just
Pay back.
Pay that back right away.
Yeah.
I, I was gonna say we don't borrow it, but I know technically you have to borrow it, but we just pay it back.
That was better. That was better, okay. Well, I mean, I consider it higher than what's on the slide. If you're looking at, is the middle ground and this, with the, and general funds?
I mean, in, in a perfect world, I'd like to see firmer numbers, especially on the security side of things.
Yeah. But.
You, we can also vote on hitting a number and then with with anticipating another vote moving forward if the costs increase and then exploring whatever funding is available for that. I think the reality of the project is we don't know what it's been caused.
Yep.
You know, if, at least the county is on notice that there was a vote that permitted an increase moving forward depending on construction costs under an approved scope of work, then that's less of a pill, I think, for the community to swallow.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think you're right, and, I mean, it's interesting, we're in a very different situation than we were like one and two years ago, where we had, you know, practically GMP based on hundred percent construction doc, guaranteed, uh, maximum price, uh, based on hundred percent construction documents, you know, with actual bids from subs, not estimates, you know, so these numbers are, they have brackets around them. And, and yeah, as we talked about, I mean, there's two other big moving pieces, you know, the scope discussion that we'll come back to in the final, decisions here today, um, you know, so the language there. And then, yeah, the big unknown also is on different grant abilities. I mean, every dollar grants frees up some other funding, so, I mean, yes.
Is the courts, are you, the architect ability, are we able to get some quick information and or as uh, an engagement with DPM and M, MWL advance? I mean, I would love to take, yeah, I would lo- I would love to take advantage of the resource we have to in- incorporate any designs and suggestions into
What we coordinate with them? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
the larger renovation consideration.
Love it.
Okay.
And, I, I mean, I think also just as a, another comment, I think that with, with setting aside the notion of new construction at this point, we're not, we're not asking for fancy or anything else, we're looking for function.
So are we.
Yeah, you know, I've just thrown that out, is that we're not, you know, we're not asking for the window dressing in terms of.
We have to start somewhere, though.
Yeah.
Um, another stairwell is another, you know, we have to have, even that list, maybe not necessarily even designs, but that list of what is ideal, so that as Jim is working.
Yeah.
I assume you shared our assessment report with this architect as well, so that, that outlines, I mean, I don't think anything's changed.
Yeah, yeah. We have, okay.
Yeah.
It's pretty thorough, but that, that's what I'd be happy to discuss it in detail at any point.
Yeah, okay, great. So we won't be winning.
And I think, I think part of your question is how quick a process is that, uh, to try to, to coordinate with the customer for that? Reach out quickly and?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we make every effort.
And the twenty nineteen assessment is, you would, I mean, you would say that's still accurate?
Yeah, I mean, I might be on a few weeks, but I would think it's coming our way.
Okay. Okay.
Whatever we're relating.
And some of the specific data is a couple, yeah, obviously out of date, but, yeah. The basic deficiency of the building remain. So, do we wanna start backwards? Like with, uh, motion giving direction to prepare that resolution with the twelve million borrowing? And then we can go back and revisit the scope guidance for DPM and
Yeah.
So, yeah, like working backwards on the, so look for motion to provide guidance to staff to draft a resolution for a certificate of participation with a borrowing level of twelve million over thirty years?
Um, I five.
I, um, there, there was a question mark at the end of that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no.
That was, that was what was.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, great. I, I'm comfortable with a shorter, thirty had always made, thirty and longer had always made me uncomfortable. That's a long time to lock in for a county government. Um, so, yeah, I'll amend that to, um, you know, look for motion to provide guidance to staff to draft a resolution for a certificate of participation with a borrowing of twelve million with a term of twenty-five years.
So.
A second.
Okay. Any other?
I don't have any other, no, I guess I'm curious if, uh.
Questions?
Sorry, you took a interest rate, you wanna put a ceiling on it or what? Can you do that?
The, Alan, the interest rate gets locked in after the resolution is done? Oh, yeah, the two o'clock, sorry.
I, I think that's right, and I think we, we get what we get in the market and we can
Can refinance.
cast the, can refinance, but also, you know, we, we, we're not locking in accepting this resolution, you know, or the final, you know, committing to the COP, so, um, I think we'll just see where it comes in.
That helps us.
Yeah.
It's been a long, little bit more. As Alan said, he thought this was considered the most unexpected of the company model.
Yeah. Any other, oh, okay, call for a vote?
I'm, I'm curious if Tim has questions or comments for us.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Or, yeah, or if there are other elements of that guidance that we need. I thought it was a pretty high-level that we start off with in our resolution.
Um, no, just a reminder that any grant dollar comes with a string attached in somebody else's perspective. Attached to it.
Okay, I'll come back and ask you more about that later. Well, I know, okay, so that, that doesn't affect the COP level, right? I mean, that affects the total project budget.
It does.
Yes, and.
Trade-offs for the county in the future.
Yep, yep. Totally understood. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, everyone. That was a long journey to get here. Okay, um, should we come back and, um, well, maybe number, number two is, would be really quick?
Yes.
And then we can talk scope in three and four. Um, so I think that, and Chris, what you presented made total sense to me that even if we maybe technically have still an engagement letter, we should just revisit and update with, you know, with any relevant details as needed.
So I would ask for, um, that approval to reengage, pending for a legal review for the changes.
With DPM?
Uh, with, with that, Kutek Rock Bourbon Council.
That comes with law.
Okay.
Great, um. I just went, I just jumped back to that, 'cause I didn't think there's gonna be much discussion. Whereas three and four, we could go down some radicals.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'll move to, uh, am I directing to create the engagement letter or to?
No, just to, if, if you would, if reengagement with Kutek Rock.
Give that. Yes.
Pending final review, and if there is a substantive change, we'll bring it back to the first.
Okay. All right, uh, I'll move to reengage with Kutek Rock, um, pending any substantive changes and, uh, finally go with you.
Second to motion.
Great. I just know, I think, and when, when, Chris, when you presented, I was just like, given it's two years old, there's likely at least a fee change, so I think, you know, some reasonable fee change. I mean, it'll come back to us for a final approval, but I, I don't, I, that wouldn't be shocking if there was some, uh, reasonable uh, changes in fees, so with that.
I'm pretty good at claiming property.
Yeah. Um, with that, I'll call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. So, uh, authorization or direction to begin the reengagement process is approved, um, so I think, um, do we, I don't think, is there anything specific on agenda item one, or is it really just three and four now that we need to determine the scope on? And one seems like overarching and we're kind of handling it within two through five, okay. So, okay, um, so maybe, I, I had notes from the scope discussion, you know, that it seemed like the, the core scope was the detention with the estimated, you know, proposed six holding cell renovation, and then the sort of immediately associated law enforcement, and, um, you know, including detention officers, um, renovation. And I think also within, for me anyway, within that core is sort of clearly needed court security interface. Um, so, for, for me, it's that secure detention, or, sorry, secure movement of detainees within the building from the renovated detention area up to the courts.
To include a Sally Court.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Elevator, which is part of the secure movement.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I think to incorporate the twenty nineteen security improvements identified, no, well, not all of them, sorry. Incorporate that conversation.
I think. I would put, I mean, so then I would, I think that, I, I, I called that core, and then I would look for the scope to include like two or three or, or, or more, kind of add, add alternates, if that's the right word, but two or three sort of additions, I think. One of which would be what you just said, Sarah, so, okay, obviously, we're gonna need to have a way to move detainees securely up to the courts. And at some point, there's like a, a dotted line in the design work, you know, but like security on the public side of the court, that's maybe different. So I would put, you know, the broader, you know, complete look at court security in an add alternate, you know, so that court security and court renovations is sort of, for me, one of the add alternates, looking at the broader entire building, sort of systems and envelope that kind of at some point begin to be necessary when you start tearing into a big chunk of a building. Necessary or just make logical sense, or for where there's, looks like there's significant grant funding. So again, like sort of systems envelope, um, as a second part of, and then I think we mentioned dispatch as a third, uh, sort of add alternate, just thinking through what, does that remain, I mean, does that remain in this building? Is, is there space for that? So again, that, that, that core stuff with detention, yeah, Sally Court, you know, the law enforcement, then, you know, so move, basically secure movement of detainees from like the, the patrol car.
Top point of time, you know, arrival, right, and then all in all the way in the.
Yeah. To, to their sitting in front of a judge.
In the court, right, exactly.
You know, so I think that for sure is in the core.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, um, and then, yeah, then for alternates, you know, dispatch, systems envelope, and the court renovations and broader court security. So that's my thinking on the scope.
Not necessarily in that.
Well, yeah, let's, I mean, let's talk about that, yeah.
Well, I, I think that the, I think that the court security piece should, really should go hand in hand with the, with the detention upgrades.
I, I agree with you. I think, I, I, I just wonder if we wanna hold off until we sort of see some of how the design's shaking out, like there was that point, like, you know, if the, if the holding cell demo and renovation is happening like this much drywall away from the dispatch building, you know, room closet that they're in, you know, maybe dispatch just kind of has to practically go first and it's less money or something. I, 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 I'm.
Well, I mean.
I'm not sure I know now what, what I would say.
Do you, I mean, I, I mean, right, I mean, would be better to just put dispatch in the annex and not even be in the same building.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was my point, is like we, I just don't feel like I know enough to like really clearly say how I would prioritize those, 'cause you, we don't quite know what the design starts impacting. Same with the systems envelope, like, there's some stuff I'd love to do, some stuff that might get grants, but maybe we can get away with not touching that stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I just think the court, the court security piece is, is like directly related to
I think all three of them really are like at the same level, because if you're moving, if you're moving major
Detention piece, they're, they're all. Well, I mean, right, they're all.
walls and, and design aspects of one, then you really have to incorporate them all into there.
Yeah.
So I don't, I mean, I don't know if we have to prioritize them, other than once we get a cost for them, we, do we find other alternates for dis- location for dispatch, or if that's surprising loss.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to do that anyway.
Yeah, and, and maybe that's something like as we actually craft the full contract for the, for, for this team, there's some sort of like decision points, you know, 'cause there's all different levels of detail you get into with the designs, maybe there's some decision points mapped out in the contracts where we can revisit this discussion once we have some sense of what the architects and team are.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see what the
Yeah.
what the court security upgrades are gonna, are gonna cause, what that's, you know, what's that gonna look like? It sounds like you already have preliminary plans and things like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see that stuff.
Some of them, we have some near plans, we've identified the deficiencies, and we know what needs to, um, you know, some suggested options, but none of them are set in stone.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would encourage you not to use the language of court security as an add alternative. I, I think that's just sort of bad messaging to, I understand your hesitation. I'm not disagreeing with what you do necessarily, I agree that
Yeah.
should be part of the court. You're gonna make adjustments as you see numbers coming in, but to call court security an alternative, I think is. And court security globally isn't just security of courts, it's the public. I mean, we have a murder trial here, which we have some that will be forthcoming. You're gonna have four hundred jurors trying to come into the courthouse. Um, there's, it's not just the security of the court staff. It's a bigger, broader community safety issue.
Point, point taken, we can find a different word.
I mean, our, our entire mission is to improve community safety. The whole, this whole conversation is about that.
Is ADA gonna be considered as well? Cause once you start touching the building, okay?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, all the, yeah.
I mean, I think it's what our conversation is, is like, I mean, you may wanna prioritize it, but by doing what you need to do in detentions, ADA can influence yours and that deals with the budget, you know?
Yeah, and I think there's some things we also don't know, like at what point, I mean, we don't fully, fully know where we're gonna hit asbestos. We have some pretty good idea from what's been done in the building over seventy years, like, we don't completely know when we might trigger some mandatory code requirements that will be expensive, you know, so.
Just a part of the scope of work.
Yep, yep, yeah. So, I mean, there's a lot more in the scope than will be listed, but I think we were trying to draw some boundaries, um, around it. Is there anything, oh, commissioners, that we didn't list in that scope discussion that you would like considered? Like, we're not doing landscaping around the building, we're not.
Is the, is the jail, is the jail gonna stay on the, on the floor that it's currently on?
I don't think we've decided.
That, Jim's right.
Yeah, so I think. Yeah, so I think we've got, I mean, we could explicitly say that we're, that we haven't decided that on our open two options. Or 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 do you feel like you have a stronger sense?
Well, Sheriff Sheriff Speckman, are 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 you, your current office space for your staff, is that working for you? Does it need to be redesigned? Could it be improved? What what's your take on this?
Um, yeah, I think it it all comes down to the cost for me. Uh, we can work with those parameters. Uh, you know, we're just as much need of office space renovations as anybody else. Um, say that's the priority over the jail. Um, I think evaluating the cost of the jail on the first floor versus the second floor, um, is worthwhile because it does bring easier access to the rest. Actually, on first floor, it's anyway, it's worth exploring. It's not a huge cost increase compared to renovations on the second floor of the current structure. Uh, there's gonna be certain obstacles that will flash over come, it's on the second floor, that would be just a. However, it's a significant cost that you need to keep it on the first floor and we're taking away the overall security of the buildings that might hopefully keep it on the second floor so that you address bigger issues.
Cause so basically wherever, from a from a security perspective, you know, whoever makes the most sense financially and operationally.
Okay. Um, one, one other thing that is on my mind, I I don't know if we have the flexibility for this, given like the reality of this decision, but I mean, at at some point in our journey on, um, sort of space needs, you know, there have been discussions like if we can move some of the offices like off of the, I mean, like the commissioner offices are like this room should be freed up. I mean, without without LCIS on the table or some other office space, I don't, I don't know how that happens. But for me, I and I I am interested in the idea of trying to give particularly like the courts, like a little bit more maneuvering room by trying to move some of the offices out of here, you know, um, so I, again, I I got a little bit squirrely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I I mean, I I I don't know how that happens, but I think I I would be interested in like some sentence in the scope about, you know, other operational, you know, space programming, operational needs of the county to be considered or something. Like, just to, like, like, I don't want to draw a hard scope boundary at like the current wall of the sheriff's office.
Right, no, and I mean, I guess that's, we talked about changing the floor and nor do we have to bump out into the parking lot
Yeah.
for a Sally Port and nor even an office space. I imagine those are some of the things that come back to us. And if we need twenty more square feet or thirty or something to make a, right, to make an office, then you have a second level and what do we, what do you actually then get for the courts piece or, I mean, just.
Yeah.
I I presume that that would be part of exploring the design and Jim's information that was provided to us.
Yeah, I think, I think that additional office space should be one of the design options that we have, because we're gonna need it.
Yeah.
We we were told we don't actually need it.
Hmm?
We don't need it.
Oh, we don't?
No.
Oh, okay.
I don't need some asset space for any more staff. We're starting, we're continuing to cut staff, so.
Well, the reason I'm saying, the reason I'm saying that is because the, is because the courts need additional space, right?
They have a lot of work.
You need meeting rooms for your attorneys, you need, you know, judges' chambers, you know, maybe a small hearing room in addition to your main courtroom.
All all those things would help our our operation greatly.
That's why I'm saying. Right.
Is this a feasibility study or is this a schematic design scope?
This is supposed to be a schematic design scope.
Schematic design, okay, just turn it into the.
Yeah.
We're now.
Yeah, 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 yes, I I I think, I mean.
Gotta be.
Yeah, yep, no, so I I'm I'm not proposing adding like a fourth option, whatever we're calling the, um, additional things like like specific personal office space. I think, you know, some language in this overall effort about, you know, taking into consideration space and operational needs of other county functions or something. Just give us a little bit of maneuvering room to be like, oh, we just realized we can fit this department over here, like, or. Some magical, like, we win the lottery and can build a new thing. Sarah, our fearless first Uber.
Um, what am I?
I I could try and call for a.
Oh. Well, I do, I mean, I just to that and I do, I mean, and I I wish, I'm trying to like look at Jim or ask, I don't know. I I mean, I do think we need, we need some strict parameters, but are these things that I am maybe assuming would be really clear to architects or designers, like if we just have X amount of extra square feet, then we hit all of the. Like, I don't think that's out of the question, is it, Tim?
Um, I mean, the focus.
And not for office space, for meeting all of the dispatch, security, detentions pieces.
You'd say like office space?
No, if if, because we're, we we are not eliminating the addition of square feet, because we're talking about adding a Sally Port or an external elevator, if that's an answer to security issues, or a stairwell, right? Like, this is not, I know we've talked about this just happening within the footprint of the courthouse, but there are some of those pieces that we are asking to explore to meet the goals, right? Which we may very well.
The Sally Port discussion has been really the only one that would be in addition to this facility.
Yeah.
And everything else would be within our existing footprint.
Okay.
Yeah.
And possible external elevator.
I would, yeah, yeah.
Um.
I just don't know if we, in my head, those, like, the external elevator were, I'm not saying, let's take over the entire parking lot and build what we want or what we need. So however we continue that conversation with McLaren.
Okay. Um.
Without making your head explode.
Well, this is the specific scope that I gave Jim is what the board gave me, is a focus on detentions and getting to the six holding cells. So we meet that statutory obligation. I've talked about all the other in, other ancillary things such as with court security, um, other things like within the facility of what we can do, but I've also just focused on the budget, um, of what we have for renovating the detention cells.
Yeah, I, well, and law enforcement. I think for me, it came up a little before, it's like, if, you know, if we're looking at, you know, the architects like sitting there with their, you know, what used to be pen and paper, whatever they're using these days, you know, and like moving the wall down the hallway a little bit to where the rec department used to be, you know, if that just like magically makes something work better or say, you know, I'm thinking of CPD and rec, like those adjacent office spaces, if there's something within sort of with very minor modifications or within the current footprint of the building, you know, if there are things where moving one or two other offices or departments in an adequate way, you know, just frees up some space to do things right within the current budget and I don't want them to like draw a hard, hard line, thou shalt not pass the current wall. Is all, I think, all we were trying to get at, but avoiding Mission Creek where suddenly we're building another building.
I hear that.
Yeah, right?
And 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 just something Tim just said that is, I wanna make sure I'm understanding when we're talking about Mission Creek, is he just said that the discussions with McLaren, I didn't hear the courts mentioned in that discussion at all. I have not referred to it as ancillary.
I've, well, I've mentioned the court security to him, but my direction from the board, Judge Scott, was to focus on detentions and upgrading detentions to meet that statutory need. Um, so the, all of the information from the courts has been passed along. I've had that discussion. I brought up the discussion that we had, Judge Duncan, in a flipping the courtroom, maybe remodeling up there. I priced out a toilet for your office. It's three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Not asking for a toilet.
I, you know, like we've, I've, I've, all of this is is with them, but I've been going off the board's guidance of focusing on detentions to meet that statutory need and that liability gap that the county currently has. So that is, that is what I have been working on. So it is not discounting or that, I'm sorry to use the word ancillary, but I mean, all that information is there, but I'm also trying to do a project that is affordable for Lake County, uh, without everything being this building and being, uh, all the services provided, being law enforcement, cams, justice, because that's the path we're headed down.
Yeah, and.
But if you don't include it in the scope, I'm not sure McLaren's gonna feel the obligation to work with us and we're not gonna be able to go to underfunded and say, we're we're looking at this, it's, you know, it's not part of the scope. So I I think all this is related.
Yeah, but at the same time, I think our, I think our direction is is pretty clear here as a VSCC that we need to give some good direction to the design team and that, you know, what, sorry, these words sound judgmental, but whether you call it core or ancillary or ad alternate or an option, you know, the, I I think our feeling is, is like the design team has to look at what we called core first and we're not cutting, I mean, we're gonna cut corners on that to keep it under budget, but like, we're gonna do that for sure. And we are going to, within budget that we've approved, look at other things that we know need to be done in this building. Um, but we have to draw a distinction between whatever the right words are, core and other options that we will do if we can in this phase. So I think that, you know, that was the guidance you given, Tim, so it's not, you know, it's not like we don't want to do this other stuff, you know, or, you know, we're not gonna consider it, but we're gonna stay within this budget plus what other grant funding we can find, including underfunded courts. And all and all the other things we listed.
And to be clear, the budget that we have for the detentions is around thirteen million and you are looking at an eighteen million dollar budget, so there is.
Yeah.
Five million dollars to do these other things that I'm just trying to make sure that we are working on the brush, which is.
Yeah. And no core, right?
I was waiting for that word to be used.
I didn't say that.
So, um, we'll do, I think, very similar motions for, sorry, give me a second.
Which number you want to mention?
Well, I was.
I think you needed, some of this was just guidance.
Okay, uh, I we were, I was gonna do three and four.
Sure, three and four is just calls, which are.
Okay, to begin preparing.
Clarifying, yeah.
Okay. Um, do you think that needs to come in the form of a vote or we can just sort of have, you know, restate what, where I think we're at?
Just summarize.
Just summarize. So I'll, I can take a crack at summarizing. I mean, we've already decided in agenda item number five, sort of the project budget, um, obviously with lots of uncertainties in terms of what actual cost will be and whether any other grant funding will become available. But in five, we decided the budget. So for the scope of work, both for McLaren, Wilson and Laurie um, and, uh, for, uh, TPM, as the owner's rep, uh, helping us, uh, oversee the project. Um, I think the scope is, uh, within the current courthouse building, um, a core set of, uh, the core core focus is the detention with the estimate of six holding cells, uh, law enforcement, office space, especially of course, including detention officers. Um, all aspects of secure detainee transport from, say, the vehicle patrol car um, through into holding and then up in a secure way through the building to courts. Um, and that would include, uh, consideration of a Sally Port and secure, you know, some minor appropriate modifications to the outside of the building for a Sally Port and if necessary, an external secure elevator. So I think that is what I had for what we've been calling the core. And then additionally to, uh, for the work to include, um, looking at, and I think in no particular order until we have more information on potential design and cost estimates, uh, but to include, um, a broader, more complete look at court security and associated renovations. Um, and then particularly in that first to three items, I need to 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 look at more the, um, like chambers and public facing parts are going beyond just that narrower focus on detainee secure transport into the courts.
Was it just, well, like, just general courthouse security?
Yeah, um, I mean, in my mind, that was focused on the court's function, not maybe our front door here, but I think, you know, I I, so I didn't, it's been a little while since I looked at the most recent like court security updates, but I think, you know, what, whether it's at this door or, you know, upstairs, the court security most, most broadly. Um, and then the sort of systems and building envelope as a second additional consideration for the design work. And then finally, um, looking at, uh, dispatch. So I think that was the guidance on scope of work. Again, vote for both McLaren, Wilson and Laurie and for TPM. Additional clarifications, thoughts, and 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 maybe just to capture what I heard, you know, where we are not looking to significantly expand the footprint of this building. Um, but we do want there to be some reasonable look at sort of other operational considerations of other inhabitants, you know, uh, other occupants of this building, you know, so take some reasonable look at other space needs, operational needs of other county departments that occupy this building currently. Without Mission Creek into fully redesigning those spaces. How, Sarah, any clarifications or additions to that as a scope guidance?
Uh, I don't think so. I'd be curious to.
Yeah, I think to.
Have this response back from McLaren.
Yeah, oh, yeah, uh, uh, yeah, yeah.
To make sure they get, not necessarily today, but to make sure that there is, um, clarity on that scope.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding then is that next steps would be we would begin actually drafting up, uh, you know, uh, uh, either revised or new contract with, you know, capturing this couple work guidance and we'd see that again. Um, and obviously, that'd be back and forth with actual teams. How, to your question, I mean, to me, systems and envelope would include sort of energy efficiency and, you know, um, stuff where there may, especially where there may be grants or energy efficiency. Yep. Um, so, yeah, I mean, sit, you know, but sewer water, electrical, windows, building envelope, um, I mean, the roof, we know, you know, we know about, so. Okay. So I think we're good on that guidance. Tim, hang on one second, just, uh, Tim, Chris, Lauren, is that any other things that you want clarified while we're here and our brains are engaged?
That's awesome.
All right, Elizabeth, it sounded like you and Tim.
Yes, I just have an idea when you were talking about that. So you still have about thirty-seven thousand dollars remaining in a grant underfunded
Yeah.
that I think has not been utilized. Is there an opportunity, uh, I mean, it's interested to shift that towards some of this design money to incorporate the courts as maybe a core in just this early phase?
I mean, my understanding is like why we have been slow to spend that is we didn't want to spend it until we knew, you know, uh, the outcome basically of this meeting.
Okay.
So, yes.
Can we bump that up to a core though? That was, if we were bringing that money to the table, again, just for design at this point? Could we bump that up to a core though, if that was, if we were bringing that money to the table, again, just for design at this point?
I mean, I think we're all, I mean, I think all these things will be.
What, what suggestion on like what we call it?
Yeah.
Cause I think that all of those things, like we're saying, are incorporated into that.
Yeah.
Big project, so.
The intent for underfunded is that these projects are gonna proceed, right? They're not in some early kind of conceptual phase there, so when we say that it's an add alternate, it sounds like there's not. You know, intent to actually include it in the base bid, and so that seems like it it might not be an actual product that goes forward. So we, I was just thinking, if we bring the money to the design table, that can at least be incorporated in that and I think that would give you a better, um, place with the underfunded commission asking for more money in the future. This is already allocated, you just have to reassign it, but going forward, if you say that this is, you know, something that you're moving forward with, they'd be willing to award more if it's a core project as opposed to just an add alternate.
I I hear what you're saying, my interpretation of the word add alternate is is that it receives the exact same design attention, but with the understanding that it will be selected. If budget allows.
Right.
So it's in there because we want it, um, but it's being clearly called out as something that looks like it's on the bubble of things, you know, for the budget.
But you can always adjust what your core is, I think maybe it's it's very critical.
And.
Yeah, we're only doing schematic right now, you could always add it as an add alternate in the bid documents, I think if we're just looking at it from this early phase right now of what would be needed. We've always offered that money to repurpose in this building for court's purposes, so I wouldn't wanna give that money back and then come back and say, hey, we want some money, that might not go over very well.
You, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you, I know.
So, you know, if we can utilize this and say, hey, we're taking this immediate step right now, that might help.
I, I mean, just for me, I had assumed that that, I, you know, thirty-seven that was remaining, um, would would be used for. The scope that we just talked about.
It's expiring at the end of this calendar year if you don't repurpose it.
Yeah. We're trying to get, I mean, we didn't say this explicitly, but like, we are trying to move this as fast as possible to green light stuff while the current board is.
Okay. My only concern is at this early phase, if we're only committing a schematic and if you say that when you, can we repurpose this money and we're gonna do it as an add alternate? It might not look over favorably, because it it shows that, you know, you don't have enough, you're not planning for it to actually happen and at a schematic design. Phase right now, you could probably commit that based on the twelve million plus the six million, that it it would be reasonable to go forward with it, then you can always downgrade it later. So I, they might not approve the reuse of that money, that's all I'm saying, it's assigned to somebody else from the old justice center, so you have to make the case for why you would repurpose it.
And that's, at least that would take us a while to do, cause every time we've tried to do that, it takes a lot.
Yeah.
But that was also my intention to, to reach out and to ask, use the funding for that.
Um, I don't, I mean, I, I'm, I don't see any reason not to, if we want all of those things from McLaren. I don't see any reason not to call it by a different name.
Just semantics.
Right. For this purpose.
I I just wanna be, I mean, I think, like, if this all comes in at like twenty-four million.
Yeah, then we're.
I just want the architect, I just want the design teams to know, I I mean, why be coy with them on what decision the three of us would make about what to do first?
Well, and knowing.
Is, so I I'm sorry, I know all these words sound really judgmental or like, don't say it well, but like.
Well, and I think from our experience too, like if we have those designs in the right packages to remove, because it has been a process in the past to remove, okay, well, let's remove. This office, but they're spread out through different floors of the entire building and that's not, I I understand, I mean, I think we need to compartmentalize it a little bit better for.
Yeah. But I agree a hundred percent with that, like, I mean, in the, I, you know, like reflecting on the process of the Monroe design, you know, in retrospect, it would have been. Better to have been like, design this so we can cut it in half.
Right.
Like, without it causing sort of structural, mechanical, um, you know, site work issues, cause that's part of what we ran, you know, there was like. You know, so I, I mean, but to me, that speaks to be clearer about what. What hard decisions will be made in what direction if we kinda know that. I don't know, cause, cause I mean, what if we like, yes, don't call that out and they put dispatch like right in the middle or something, and then it's like, oh, no, cut that, it's like. You know, you know, like if I was an architect, it would be nice to know, like, oh, dispatch might get caught, like, I won't split that, like somewhere where it can be cut.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm not sure how to split those hairs.
I don't know that you split the hairs, I think you, these things evolve over time, we've all seen that, that things get pulled out, I understand you're trying to give direction, but. You know, you're also trying to give direction in other direction too and, uh, you know, to call court security. Some term language that it's secondary and then to go to ask the judicial branch for money, especially given, we've asked, I think, we've all, we've asked for the money, we've got the money, we haven't used it. Uh, we haven't moved forward, I think you have to be a little careful right now, uh, we're here, I understand what you're saying, I I may agree or disagree that court security shouldn't be an equal priority, I disagree. But I don't get to make that decision, but you gotta be careful with your words, cause we're, hopefully, we're gonna be in a position, we're gonna ask for money, I mean, if you had, maybe we'll do it. Underfunded is, underfunded, funded, that was our history, um.
Cause we'll buy a different name and get the money.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll do it if we can afford it.
They'll do all this if you can afford, you know, I, that's reality, I mean, the jail comes in at thirty million, uh.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're having a different conversation next month.
Yeah.
Um, is that, I don't know. Can we communicate that as like design alternates, but as a core scope? I mean, how are we? To me, to, I'm trying to get there.
Well, I I mean, I said, I mean, my understanding is, is that just because something is called whatever the word is, that's not core, you know. It it is going to get the same level of detail in the different like phases of this work.
And not just remove the word core.
You know.
Just really, yeah, just, just wordsmith it, so.
Okay.
Just have a signature to focus on these elements.
Yeah, yeah.
After the schematic design, then you start moving towards the actual design of what you can afford.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that sounds great, so we have four elements.
I just wanna be clear, like, I just want, I want the, I want the design team to know what the client is thinking.
Um, priorities?
Yeah.
Four priority areas. Okay.
Yeah.
I like that suggestion, Chris, thanks.
Okay. We look forward to seeing the draft. With the, with the archbilly word, it's goes, yeah, do we need to talk, do we need anything from us on timelines or, I mean.
On the first?
Has it, have all this by Monday?
I thought it was gonna be an expensive agenda, so.
Yeah. No, I mean, that was a, that was a question, I mean, just if you need any further guidance from us or or work from us or. Uh, okay. Anything else on any of the five agenda items? Then I think at three o'clock, we can adjourn, take a quick break before starting our afternoon work session. Maybe ten minutes to.